Good afternoon. Now I'd like to bring the regular afternoon council meeting to order, and the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Arneson and Secondar, Councillor Kuntst. All those in favor, pose carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes, the regular afternoon meeting of January the fourteenth. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Ferguson, second by Councillor Whitmarsh. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor, pose and carried. Now I need a motion to resolve into special close for the items on the agenda and on table. Councillor Kuntst, second by Councillor Arneson, and Councillor Arneson.
Yes, I have a legal item to add to the close, please.
Okay, thank you. And Councillor Long?
Yeah, I had a question about the minutes. I'm sorry, I didn't push the button fast enough.
To go back, okay. So is this on, first of all, let's do the special close. Did you have something for special close, Councillor Long?
No, for the minutes of January fourteenth.
Okay.
I know we passed them so quickly.
I'll deal with this first, thanks. So seeing nothing else, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Well, I have a question on this one.
Oh, was it carried? That's what I was asking. Okay, Councillor Long.
Okay, but, all right, so H1, is that an appropriate item to be enclosed?
We can discuss that once we get into closed. So we'll prove this to go into closed, and when we do the agenda in closed, then that's...
I move H1 come off. But I don't think it's appropriate to go into closed with it.
H1.
Okay, we'll discuss that in closed, because we can't discuss it now, because it's in open. So we'll discuss that when we go to closed. Okay, so I'll call the question again. All those in favor, pose carried. And Councillor Long, just to go back to the minutes.
Yes, I'm sorry, it happened so fast there. But in the afternoon meeting, there was a presentation on open burning, which I found very informative, I'm sure we all did. So I'm just wondering if staff, there's an initiative perhaps that staff are going to undertake to parlay that information to those that are burning?
So basically, the minutes as if there's any errors or omissions. If you want to have something like that, that would be a new request under other business. You could bring that up in other business.
All right.
The minutes are correct. Yeah, so we just save that for other business when we get back to the afternoon, and that would be great. Okay, thank you, and we'll move into closed. We're now reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Leningh Council. Next item on the agenda is delegations, and E1 is Sharon Gregson from Coalition of Childcare Advocates of B.C. Welcome here. And the, the mic will, there's a series of three lights there, when it starts to flash, you know you're getting closer, when it goes red, your five minutes will be up, but we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
I'm waiting for lights, I think, am I?
No, once you've started your introduction, then I'll push the timer. I'll give you a little opportunity to introduce yourself.
Thank you very much, thank you. I appreciate, thank you, Mayor. My name is Sharon Gregson. I'm here from the Coalition of Childcare Advocates of British Columbia. I'm a former Vancouver School Board trustee, and I travel the province talking to city councils, local government, and school boards, and community groups about childcare in British Columbia, the $10-a-day plan, and some of the current funding opportunities that are available from the provincial government that I'd like you to make sure you know about. Thank you. So, whoops. There we go. So quick overview of what childcare looks like right now, what the community solution is, what government action is, what's happening, and then what's next. So in British Columbia, there are 575,000 children, zero to 12, and in Langley Township, that would be 22,000 children, I believe. My colleague Alicia Rempel is here from Langley Children, and those are the stats that she's provided with me. Two-thirds of those children in B.C. have got mothers who are in the paid workforce, and yet we only have enough licensed childcare spaces for 100,000-plus children. And in Langley, that means that only 16% of children are able to access licensed childcare. It's also unaffordable. Here's a quick snapshot of some local fees. Obviously, more expensive for infants, but even for three- to five-year-olds, looking at $800 a month, and that's after the recent reductions that the provincial government introduced. Can be over $2,000 a month per child, and yet early childhood educators working in childcare typically earn far below a living wage, about $17 or $18 is the provincial average. Something called the EDI, which Alicia's committee may have presented to you on the past. In the past, the provincial vulnerability rate as a measure of population health in British Columbia is 32.5%. That's of all five-year-olds. In this school district, there's a 28% vulnerability, which is actually an increase from when these stats first started being collected, and so vulnerability is increasing of five-year-olds here, which is of concern. And here's more detail on the vulnerability rates of five-year-olds in Langley, and you can see there how the township and the city break out, but it's very worrying to see Aldergrove at 36% vulnerability, for example. My husband and I have got property on his family's farm on 272nd, by the way, so I have a, township's near and dear to me. So quick snapshot of families, how families have changed in these years, '76 to 2014. The dark blue section in 1976, more than half of families were described as having the mom who stayed at home with children and the dad who went out to work. You can see that by 2014, less than a quarter of families fit that description. The light blue section in 1976 were the number of dual-working parent families. You can see that by 2014, more than half of families have got both parents in the workforce. So the very nature of families over the decades has changed, and probably each one of us has experienced that in our own family. So what does the community suggest to do about this? Well, we suggest the $10-a-day childcare plan. The real name is the Community Plan for a Public System of Integrated Early Care and Learning, a name that nobody really remembers, hence the branding $10-a-day. We call for a new piece of legislation in Victoria, and it speaks to the rights of young children, indigenous approach to indigenous early childhood education, moving childcare out of MCFD, the Child Protection Ministry, and into the Ministry of Education, capping parent fees importantly at $10 a day, reducing fees for low-income families, improving the wages of early childhood educators, and investing in the ECE workforce. Quick snapshot, that's the old Mayor Vernon. We were in his council chambers not too long ago. You can see many provinces and territories, in fact, most of them have now moved childcare into a Ministry of Education, and we're just waiting for British Columbia to do this, too. Economists are our new allies in the world of early childhood, because all the economic research shows that if you invest in quality for children in their early years, then over their life course, it more than pays for itself. So what about Quebec? Well, they have had an affordable childcare system, not perfect, ah, but since 1998, and it's already bringing in returns to their provincial government. I'm going to snapshot forward. So yes, we can afford the $10-a-day childcare plan. Fifty local governments have already indicated their support. I'm hoping that your council will as well. Thirty-one school districts have, including the Langley School District, the United Way, for instance, the Union of B.C. Indian Chiefs, a long list of supporters. That's, the mayor has that list in front of him. All three major parties have committed to invest in childcare, and that's certainly what's happening now. The feds are investing $51 million a year in childcare, and what's the provincial government doing? Well, in April, they introduced the Fee Reduction Initiative that's impacting the families of more than 50,000 children in the province, reducing fees. They introduced sort of a super subsidy in September, which eliminates fees for families earning $45,000 a year. That's a big benefit for families. This is the important part for your council. They have introduced funding for new spaces, which is really the crux of the matter for local governments. I understand you've applied for the $25,000 planning grant, but there is also a million dollars available directly from MCFD, once you have a plan in place, in order to create new spaces, and that's a million dollars for public partners per project. There's investments now in the ECE workforce, a dollar an hour, it started in September, and another dollar an hour wage enhancement coming in 2020. Prototypes are, a funding prototype, it's like running a pilot of the $10-a-day plan. There isn't one in Langley, and we're hoping there'll be a second wave of prototypes, and Langley will apply and have a $10-a-day childcare plan happening right in your city, in your township. So we're calling for an expansion of prototype sites, as I mentioned. We're calling for a universal approach to childcare expansion, not based on income testing, and in front of you, you have a handout on why just income-tested subsidies are not the solution. We don't fund elementary school that way, it doesn't make sense to fund childcare that way, and we're suggesting to the provincial government that they do a prototype of modular buildings as well, that can go on to publicly-owned land to quickly bring up the number of spaces that are available to families. So the township of Langley could be the 51st local government to support the $10-a-day plan, and that's, I'm sorry, my red light is still on, but I hope I've given you a bit of a snapshot of why it would be important for you to support this initiative. It doesn't cost the township anything to indicate support, but it helps send a message to the provincial and federal governments that they need to take action on this issue.
Thank you very much. I do have a question from council. Councillor Richter.
Yeah. When my children were young, I was paying like $10 bucks an hour for daycare at that point, and I'm just wondering where the $10 bucks a day came from. That seems awfully low. I mean, it's a great deal, but...
Right.
And where's the money going to come from to make up for the real cost?
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to answer that question. So it comes from the same place where we think about how we run other public services, like our elementary schools, our libraries, our emergency services. It comes through working people who are contributing their taxes. And the beautiful thing about childcare, and all the costing analysis all over the world demonstrates this, is that when you can get more people to actually participate in the workforce, then they're paying taxes, both to the provincial and federal governments. And so the experience in Quebec and other jurisdictions is that the return to governments from more people working and spending money in their local economy offsets the initial investment. So if we think about elementary school, for example, we don't expect to even pay $10 a day to go to elementary school. We expect that it's a public service that benefits families and the community and our economy, and the same is true of early childhood education.
Okay. And you mentioned a wage of $25 an hour for the early childhood educators. What do they get paid now?
Well, there are, the provincial average is between $17 and $18 an hour. It's very rare to find an early childhood educator that makes a living wage, or who can even afford to enroll their own children in the programs that they work in. And so this is, you know, we'd never, we'll never have a high-quality system if we don't invest in the people delivering the service, so we need to invest more in their education so that they can provide quality care. And then, of course, the same way we think about our elementary school teachers, people have to be paid well to do important work, that's what they're well-educated for.
So is this like a unionized group?
No.
No?
No.
Will they be a unionized group?
Well, I think that's the democratic right of people to decide if they want to unionize. We don't say that they need to be unionized at all. That's up to the people who are working.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you for coming today. Just a couple of questions to follow up on some that Councillor Richter asked. With education, we have sort of a, in our taxes, a school tax, or something that we pay as part of our taxes, and it's sort of shown in our property taxes how much is designated to schools. In other areas where they're doing this, maybe Quebec is an example, have, do they introduce like a childcare tax, an additional tax, to help fund, like we do for schools, to help fund?
Thank you for the question. So in the budget 2018 from the province, they committed $1 billion to childcare and didn't need to create any kind of new tax to do that. They were able to do it from the surplus. And the information that we have from other jurisdictions, so Quebec is one of them, you're right, also a little bit from Manitoba, where they started to do a fee reduction for all childcare spaces, from the Netherlands, from Scandinavian countries, is that very quickly, as you start to create new childcare spaces and more people are able to go to work because they can access childcare, particularly we're talking about women, that you start getting more revenue into government. So no, it doesn't require a new tax.
Okay. So what about, what are the sort of expected infrastructure issues? I mean, if we have $10 childcare, it seems that that would require a greater need for infrastructure, more daycare spaces, more facilities. Is there some kind of study or analysis that's done on how that impacts a community from an infrastructure point of view?
Thank you very much for asking that question. So one of the points that I didn't get the opportunity to highlight is that when we talk about moving early childhood education into the Ministry of Education, it means that the governance structure is through school districts, and so they already have that infrastructure, rather than trying to create a whole new system. And so it's the, if you look at the School Act, early learning is already a part of the School Act. School districts are responsible for that, and so it's about expanding that part of their mandate, of course, with funding to go along with it. If we think about the way childcare exists now, it's delivered on a contract for service with MCFD, and so rather than a contract for service for, which is how childcare providers receive their funding, it would be on a contract for service through the Ministry of Education and the governance through school districts.
So that could have impact on the, on the, the schools themselves? I mean, they're already, most of our schools are crowded, so it would have an impact in terms of more facilities needed, renovations done to facilities, all sorts of things?
Right, so it's for childcare on and off school sites. Absolutely, it makes sense that all school-age childcare should be on a school site, and part of the funding that is available right now from the provincial government is for renovations that can be used for schools, put on a second story, for example, for an expansion. But you're quite right, we do need more childcare spaces. You've only got enough childcare for 16% of children for licensed childcare. That means a lot of children are in the unregulated sector, which is unmonitored and of unknown quality, which is why we see worrying rates and increasing rates of childhood vulnerability by the time children start kindergarten. So yes, we're of course not talking about something that's going to happen overnight. This is perhaps a generational change, but if we don't start thinking now about the childcare system we need in the future, we just continue to be in chaos.
Right.
And so this is about some long-term planning, the kind of planning that you're doing through the grant that you've applied for.
Right, okay. And my last question is, just, if you wouldn't mind, just remind me again, what does it mean for us in the township to say that we support? Like you're saying, it doesn't cost us anything, so what, what are we doing, or what are you asking for us, what they would indicate support?
So the resolution that we suggest says that we support the $10-a-day plan. It has the potential to benefit children, families, communities, and the economy. And so the $10-a-day plan that you have some information in front of you is about the provincial and federal government investing more in creating new licensed childcare spaces, quality spaces. It's about reducing the fees for families and increasing the levels of education and wages for early childhood educators. So it's about improving our childcare system, and that's the responsibility of senior levels of government. And it's, they have started to step up to do that, and so it's a way of encouraging them that this isn't just a one-shot deal in budget 2018. The federal bilateral agreement is being renegotiated this year, so the $51 million that the federal government is sending to B.C. needs to increase, because the feds benefit when more women go to work and pay federal income tax. They need to step up. So it's about sending a message to senior levels of government that we want a high-quality childcare system in our jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson.
Yes, thank you for coming, Miss Gregson. I wanted to ask you, I wanted to go about it a different way. Certainly, as a retired teacher, I certainly understand and appreciate what you're doing, and it's great. Do you actually have a budget for this particular thing that you could provide us, or email us, or otherwise?
So the $10-a-day plan has been costed out three times. Once by the Human Early Learning Partnership at UBC, secondly by an economist named Igleka Ivanova in British Columbia, and thirdly by an economist in Ontario named Robert Fairholme, all with credible economist kind of companies. And so all that information is available on the website. The cost in, when we have a...
Bringing you that with your...
I brought you the highlights.
Is it in here?
Yeah. I brought you the, I brought you the executive summary.
Okay, good.
So the, the cost when we have a fully functioning childcare system, the same way we have an elementary school system that all children can attend, once in a decade, a decade from now, when we have all going to plan a childcare system where all children can access the care they need, whether it's when their mom is on evening shift, or weekends, or nine-to-five, the cost to running that is $1.5 billion, but the returns to government, even conservatively, are $1.3 billion. And so it more than pays for itself in several of the studies. But I'm happy to send more links for more information.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm very good.
Thank you. Councillor Kuntst.
Yes, thanks for coming. Currently, where are the prototypes, and how many children are, and parents are taking advantage of those?
Thank you. So there are 53 organizations across the province, representing about 2,000 families, 2,500 children, and they stretch from Burns Lake to Richmond to the Okanagan. They were determined by who applied to be a prototype, so I honestly don't know if anybody from Langley Township applied to be one, but we certainly are pushing the provincial government to do a second wave of applications, because it's life-changing for families who are in that prototype.
So a prototype, then, is a person, not a place? Because I was imagining that this was like a place where, you know...
It is.
Okay, it is.
So a prototype is a childcare program.
Okay.
And it can be a licensed family childcare program, or it can be a licensed group childcare program. It could be for 12 children or 60 children, depending on the age group.
I see.
So, yeah, it's 2,500 children across the province benefiting from that at the moment.
Okay, so that was, one of my questions was, if you created new spaces, or you worked to, obviously worked with an existing childcare provider, and that's, that's who you're dealing with right now, right? You're...
To create new prototypes?
Yeah, so the existing ones, you're working with other childcare programs?
Right, so...
Like MCFD and...
So the, so the province announced in November who the 53 prototypes were.
Okay.
And they're doing an 18-month pilot...
Right.
To determine the outcomes for families when they have childcare for $10 a day or $200 a month. The other funding streams that the provincial government has announced are in effect, the Fee Reduction Initiative that's benefiting 50,000 children, the affordability benefit 80,000 children, those are already in play.
Okay. How does one apply to, you know, for a prototype if our community, so this will go out again?
We're pushing them to do another wave of applications, yes, and then it's a matter of filling out the forms.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you very much for coming today. In the brief amount of time that we've had to review this, if we're not really aware in any great detail about it, I did want to ask a question of clarification, because I think that you said that this would be based on the Ministry of Education, so they would be the ones that are charged with administering this program, is that correct? Okay. Because talking about the plan in general, and what I recognize from my own experience, it is oftentimes when you're liaising with another level of government, it can be a bit challenging, especially if a new paradigm is being put forward. So I think that there are a lot of moving parts potentially to this. I really think it's a very positive step forward, and I do know that other communities have embraced this and have done very well under this model, because I do recognize that the investment in this is far, the outcome is far in excess of the investment, and so, but it's just a different perspective and a different focus for the funding. And I was also interested in the modular aspect. Council received an invitation today, actually, to go to a site where they are showing the construction of modular units, and so could it be the case that if there wasn't any room on a school site, that they could be located somewhere in a social hub or something that's related to access that would be good for the families that were using them?
Thank you very much, Councillor. To your first point, you're quite right, and no one community, however well-intentioned, is ever going to solve the childcare crisis alone. It takes senior levels of government investment to fix childcare. To your second point around modular, whether it's wood or steel construction, absolutely, we're suggesting to government that they work with all public partners to create more childcare spaces, particularly modular. That could include B.C. housing, the universities and colleges, the health authorities, as well as local governments and school, school, school boards. Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Thank you for your presentation. I imagine you've looked internationally at other examples, because this, is there a downside that we must make sure that we don't go down?
There isn't a cheap fix. So going the cheapest route doesn't give quality. So that's why we need to make sure that early childhood educators are well-trained, that are treated as professionals, because a high turnover of low-paid staff doesn't create a quality environment for children. We need to make sure that we are not putting them in 40-year-old portables that weren't good enough for the elementary school, but they, we think they might be good enough for childcare, so we have to make sure that we're, we say children are our greatest resource, we need to invest in them as if that's true. So I think ensuring that we're providing quality is how you get good outcomes for children, and you support families.
Because there's also, you could look at parental leave, if that's enough. I don't know what the numbers are, because I haven't had a kid for a while, but I know some parts of the world make sure that there is a generous amount of time so that the children can be at home.
Thank you for mentioning that. Part of the plan is to strengthen the 18-month leave that parents can access, which means we need then less infant care, which is the most expensive to provide, and so we need to make sure that parents can actually afford to take the 18 months of parental leave, which often isn't the case now, and that some of it is potentially directed at dads particularly, because that's a good way to start healthy relationships in families with dads and babies. So investing in parental leave appropriately is an important aspect of the plan.
Yeah, and also, I read somewhere that extending the school hours to match work hours might be helpful, too, so that you don't have to move children around and so forth. Is that something that's also part of your initiative?
Well, we, we need to, we think about kindergarten and grade one particularly as being a part of the early childhood education system, so looking at a seamless day for children, that's shown internationally to have the best outcome, so that children don't have to go to three different places in their school day. So we're making best use of our public facilities by having before and after-school care in schools or on school grounds, and making the facilities appropriate for that day.
Also, coordinating the school end times. I mean, my grandson is old enough to take the younger one home, but he, the school doesn't work. He doesn't get out until, I forget what the numbers are, but they don't, of course, they don't coordinate, which would be easy to fix, you'd think. Anyway, thanks for your...
But that speaks to the value of having children who, we make better use of our school grounds, so that parents have got one drop-off spot, rather than, you know, people having to drive to different municipalities for their childcare and then get back for school, yeah, being more thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to reports to council, and F1 is Storm DCC Front-Ending Agreement, East Gordon Development Limited. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Arneson, Secondar, second. Councillor Long, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question on F1.
It hasn't registered.
Yeah? No, it hasn't registered either.
It's not pending.
Okay, it'll register in affirmatives. Will you be... carries unanimously. We'll have that looked at in a break. And next, F2 is Sanitary DCC Front-Ending Agreement, East Gordon Development Limited. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Kuntst, and a Secondar. Councillor Arneson. Councillor Long.
Yeah, can, does, does this tie into the, to the private pump stations? Is this the same area that we've had concerns from Milner Heights and others with? So this is a forced system that the developer put in, but it requires pumping? And if so, how is that distributed amongst the region, amongst the benefiting lands that everybody chips in on that?
Mr. Sefi, maybe you can provide a little more detail.
Thank you, Your Worship. It does not affect the private sanitary pump station, and the slide on the screen, Your Worship, indicates the area that is benefiting and the area that is subject of the front-ending agreement. The area that's shown in green are the benefiting areas beyond the front-ending lands that will be, the DCCs from which will be going towards the pump, the, sorry, the force main that's shown in red line.
Okay, so, but that force main is, does require pumping, and who actually looks after keeping that pump going? Is it just the red guys, or is it the green?
That's, that's a municipal, municipal pump station.
So it's not the private one that we hear so much about?
No.
Councillor Toshbalani.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Maybe through Mr. Ramon, my question maybe is almost on the same line, this, on page 16, that sanitary force main, that's going to come out of the benefiting lands? It's all downhill. That line goes down the street, and then it goes along, and then comes out at 68th, does it? It's already in the ground?
This system is already in the ground. This system is already in the ground, Your Worship. The, the front-ending developer has requested the execution of an agreement that provides a township, that gives a township the ability to collect ACCs from the benefiting area and pass them on to assist with recovery of the costs.
Oh, okay, but so why, why wouldn't we be able to, like, the, the problem that we were just talking about, can't it pump into that main? Or, I guess it does. It's just got to pump uphill.
That's correct.
On to 72nd, and then it comes down.
That's correct.
And that's the problem. Okay. That's, well, it's not a problem here. Okay, an issue, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F2.
That's the picture.
And it carries unanimously. And move on to minutes of committees. The Heritage Advisory Committee of January the 9th, could I have a motion to receive those minutes? Councilor Long, second by Councilor Kunst, discussion? Councilor Richter?
Yes, on the work plan, they have a number of items, and I'm just wondering what the cost...
So we're not on the work plan yet, we're just doing receipt of the minutes.
Okay, just receipt.
We'll get to the work plan next.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. It's now H2. If we, Councilor Long, second by Councilor Kunst, and Councilor Richter, if you...
Yeah, I'm looking at the 2019 work plan, and there are a number of items on the work plan, and I'm wondering if there's going to be an accumulated cost out of all of this? Like, for example, updating the heritage inventory, continuing to update statements of significance, what else have they got in here? The archaeological overview assessment.
Mr. Back, and I see Ms. Horix here, did you wish to, or...
Your Worship, the...
Mr. Seffy, thank you.
The costs are included or will be recoverable or covered as part of the operating budget. So there is no additional costs to be incurred. They're all to be borne as part of the existing operating budget that, that is part of the budget annually.
And is that consistent with other years for the Heritage Advisory Committee's budget? It's their budget, is that what we're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So they have, do they have a budget then that's bigger than the budget of the other advisory committees?
That's part of the department's work program, Your Worship. It is not the committee's budget, but rather the department that provides the support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Woodward.
Yeah, no, I saw in the, in the work plan that the intent was to receive a presentation regarding placing the heritage register, heritage registry online. I wanted to actually inquire whether it's the intent to get that online this year or to simply receive a presentation about getting it online. So if I could get clarification on that, do we know?
Your Worship, I see Ms. Horix is nodding to the affirmative.
So the intent is to get it online this year, is that correct? And that would include the inventory and the interest as well, those three different categories, or just the registry? Because I get a lot of confusion from some members of the public that don't know there's in fact three lists, and so I think getting the stuff online is great and long overdue.
Thanks, thanks for the question, Your Worship. We will be going online with the Community Heritage Register in February during Heritage Week, and council will be receiving a memo on that. We're starting with the register, and then we'll take a look at how that, what kind of feedback we get, then we might go to an inventory layer. It's a mapping layer, so people will be able to not only explore the location of these things, but the history on them as well. So it's really quite a unique application you'll see.
Yeah, I definitely look forward to seeing that. I know there's lots, there's been a lot, but there's buildings on the inventory that have a significant amount of heritage value, so I think it would be important to also have the public aware of the inventory, if that's something that can be considered this year.
We could, if, if there's a need for that or the desire for that, we could certainly move to developing the inventory layer this year because the register layer is almost ready to go.
Now, Councilor, Councilor Long can, can relate those comments from council to the committee, and hopefully that can be considered. So thank you for that.
Thank you, there's no further questions, thank you. Seeing no further questions and concerns, I will call a question on H2. And it carries unanimously. So I move on to other business, and I1 is the 2019 Financial Plan Cost Drivers, and on table you'll see a nice spreadsheet that's been provided for our perusal, and staff will be providing with us with a bit of a presentation and explanation.
Your Worship, more of an explanation as opposed to a presentation at this stage. This, let's just talk about the process coming up, what this represents and what it does not represent, and the path forward. So as you may recall, we have our next priority session coming up in about a week or so, and about a week thereafter, we have our, we have our first or inaugural budget meeting, if we will, to start looking at things. This is to provide it to you, just simply to provide a context in terms of what we're seeing so far. This document was updated as of this morning, and it continues to be updated as we go along. And this just simply shows some of the challenges we're facing in terms of some of our cost drivers. This is not intended to be a representation of tax increases or intended to be a representation of decisions or directions that are being taken. This is simply a snapshot of what we're experiencing so far as we work towards the 2019 budget. And what's interesting is we are being, we are finding it challenging, perhaps slightly more challenged than, than in previous years because of some of the fixed built-in cost drivers we're actually facing. What we're seeing, for example, is in the user pay utilities, which are water, sewer, and solid waste. Other entities, other levels of government have raised their rates significantly, and you'll see those represented in the lines that are showing some potentially significant increases to the user pay utilities. Again, these are things beyond our control, simply things that are being passed along to us. As we then go to the universal services, we also have some similar things occurring, where we see such things as previously agreed contract provisions, the employer health tax, and, and some ordinary processes that lead us to a preliminary starting point that is somewhat higher than we've seen in previous years. We then look again at the special contracts that occur, and we see how much those are. We see some of the built-in collections that, or that other parties are collecting, and all of a sudden, we come to a cost driver of about four and a half, four and a half percent. As well then, when we take a look at what we see as being our usual things that we build in, that jumps to about 5.3%. Now, that represents, that does not represent, sorry, any inclusion for growth. This is a gross number, not a net number. So all of a sudden, though, we see cost drivers of about 5%. When we deduct growth, which usually comes in between 1% and 2%, that brings us back to, we'll say, a 4% or 3 and 3/4% range as we come out of the gate. Now, that's prior to any additional programs, any adjustments that may be necessary because of unusual circumstances. For example, in a bad snow year, that could mean there'd be an increase because of the need to add more money to the snow reserve. It was a very good snow year, so we don't have any extraordinary things coming through. So that helps us a little bit in going forward. But I thought it would be helpful for council just to, to get a snapshot before we start going too deeply into some of the next processes we've been talking about, so they have a point of reference or a terms of reference in terms of considering such things as service enhancements, unusual expenditures, capital programs, all those things we're going to be seeing. So again, not something that's intended to be a quick item, not something that's intended to foreshadow anything directly, but to give you a perspective that will help, because I know there's a lot of enthusiasm on council for some of the projects. What this means to us is when we're looking at things beyond operating, such things as capital programs or capital projects, we realize we have to actually raise funds either from reserves, which we do very reluctantly, or from other sorts of opportunities such as grants, endowments, or converting other assets. So those are all part of the discussions that are coming up, but we thought it'd be wise to have a perspective going forward. Now, Karen, that's my overview. Did you wish to add anything?
That sounded perfect to me.
Well, without endorsement, good, good overview. Thank you very much for this. This is very valuable, I think, going into the work that we'll be doing over the next couple of months. I have a couple of questions. The employer health tax, we know that that's just coming online, and we're getting, it's kind of a double dip that the province is doing, and we see 1.22%. Our taxes would have to cover that by, at the amount of 1.22%. Will that go down in future years as this evens out, or is it, this will be a one-time, and then we won't see it again?
These numbers roughly, and I say that very cautiously, would equate to about $1,220,000, for example. So this year, we would build into the base budget, that number. So next year, that base number would be included, and would be locked into our ongoing expenditures. If the, if the tax went up, then that would be an increase. If it went down, that would be putting up some funds for other areas. So it's a significant item that should not affect us going forward, except for this one-year blip unless there's a increase or a decrease in the rate itself.
So, and there are other areas where, over the last few years, the council has elected to put money aside in various contingency funds, such as capital, renewing capital assets that we have. And is that in here, or is that an add-on? So those haven't even been put into this yet?
Correct.
So we haven't discussed those yet.
Up to the 4.57 number as an illustration. It's fairly close, but it's an illustration. Simply by the calendar turning over, those are the costs that we, we are incurring. We build in additional numbers for things such as development, so when we take over a new road or a new park, those things are automatically added. Those come after that. So we're simply showing the cost drivers we're primarily seeing on the general side from such things as the tax, from previously agreed-upon contracts, to previously agreed-upon, I guess, decisions such as adding for our CMP members, those sorts of things. Those are significant. But also significant on the user pay utilities, for example, is the significant increase in regional rates that are simply being passed on to us that we have very limited flexibility in dealing with from such things as the waste collection, or from the sewer utility, or the regional sewer provision, or the regional provision of water.
Okay, thank you. There are, I'll open this up to council and a couple of questions here. Councilor Richter?
Yeah, I know you're saying that we shouldn't be seeing this as a foreshadowing, but if our costs are going up anywhere from 5% to 14%, that kind of translates in my mind to we're going to have to have tax increases again this year. Is that a wrong assumption?
We either have to decrease revenues, sorry, increase revenues elsewhere or decrease expenses. In the user pay utilities, that's very difficult because we don't do a lot other than pass those along. In the universal services, that is something where we have some options by increasing revenues through other options, such as user fees, or by decreasing expenditures by way of looking at some of the programs and services and reconsidering either the program itself or reconsidering the level of service we provide. There are some options in that. It's, I think, just important at this point for council to understand, this isn't a year where we expect to have a tremendous surplus in flexibility. This is one of the leaner tighter years we've had because of some of the issues that we're facing.
Yeah, and I certainly concur with your comments about the metro fees, and that's not going to get any easier to swallow over the next five years because they're hitting us with big increases. Okay, well, thank you very much for giving us the heads up.
Thank you, Councilor Ferguson.
I'd also like to thank and compliment staff, and thanks, staff, for bringing this to our attention. Of course, you know, with the perfect presentation comes, of course, the perfect questions. And I don't think that we should dumb down or play down the fact that the employer health tax is actually a payroll tax. And here we are in 2019, introducing a payroll tax on top of the contract provisions. And my question, is there any movement whatsoever that they, the province, could, you know, delay or cut or take a portion of this horrendous payroll tax? I know that the school districts have tried, and I'm just wondering, my first, my first question to you, if that's still worked on by either the LMLGA or UBCM or others?
Back.
Your Worship, we understand it continues to be worked upon, however, we also understand it's unlikely there'll be a revisiting of this in the short term. There may be some provisions made for school districts where they may have a one-time expenditure from their reserves, but after that, they may be excluded. But as terms of municipal governments and other levels, such as Metro Vancouver, or of course, the private sector, there doesn't appear to be any indication of a change of position.
Well, it's good for you, I'm losing my voice here, but I'm sure that we're going to be bringing this and other items up in, in our budget deliberations. But it's certainly this and other costs are a real challenge, certainly as we go into the budget deliberations and how we actually find the money. And the last thing is, I mean, it's like a, I guess, a plea for, for help. You know, we need in this day and age, other income generators other than, you know, our fees, charges, and taxes. Has staff got any recommendations? Are we looking for something regarding that in the budget deliberations?
Your Worship, there's all sorts of innovative things we can come up with, but it's going to be something council has to consider from a policy consideration. We know many of our neighbors are favored by the fact they have casino revenue, the township does not. We don't anticipate that a casino is on the horizon. There once was a community gaming facility in the township. There is some suggestion it may return at some point, but that's very much in its infancy. There is these new, new revenue streams being generated by cannabis that's being looked at more from a taxation or from a perhaps business license fee that helps. And as well, we've also looked at such things as electronic signage, for example. These are just illustrations where our neighbors have taken advantage of that, and that has a significant impact on some of their budgets. Again, council will have to deliberate, though, on each of those issues, the accompanying social issues that come along with those, and their desire to entertain or simply to, to determine they're not for this community.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions of staff? Okay, there's no action on this, it's just for information, so we'll move on to I2. Now, Ms. Bauer, there was a motion enclosed to move, an order's a motion into open. Do we need a motion to amend the agenda? Yes. So if I could have a motion to amend the agenda to allow for, what did I do? Councilor Woodward, Councilor Kunst, discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll just show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. So with that, the motion that we moved into open is very similar to the motion in I2, and we'll deal with the, Councilor Richter's notice of motion first. And if there's any member of council wishes to make an amendment to it, we'll do it through the normal process. Because the two motions are close, only difference, real difference I see is that Councilor Long's asked staff to undertake the assessment, whereas Councilor Richter's asks for a consultant to do that. So because it's not on the agenda, maybe, Ms. Bauer, you could read the motion, and then I'll ask Councilor Richter to speak to it.
The motion reads, whereas there is considerable public concern about the heritage value of the old Aldagrove Fair Fire Hall, therefore be it resolved that council engage a heritage conservation consultant to assess the heritage value of this building and the feasibility for its relocation.
Thank you. Councilor Richter?
Yes, I will move that motion and note for the record that it was put on in the in-camera meeting of January 14th, 2019.
Thank you. And is there a second or?
Sir.
Councilor Long, seconds. Any discussion, or Councilor Richter, did you wish to speak to it?
Yes, and I, I think the motion, it's very succinct, but essentially, there is a lot of concern in the community of Aldagrove about the potential loss of heritage represented by this fire hall. So I think in fairness to the public there, we should undertake determination of the heritage value before we make any decision to destroy that building.
Thank you. That's a quick question for staff, maybe. Because it says a council engage, so the funding, would that come from council contingency, or is there a budget in the other budget envelopes that funding would come from? Just so we're clear.
Your Worship, given the, I guess, the moderately low fees expected to engage a consultant, it can be borne within existing operating budgets.
Great, thank you, just wanted that clarification, thank you. Councilor Long?
Well, I'm just happy to see it on the table. I think my motion's worded better, but it doesn't matter. I think, I would rather just let staff decide whether they're going to hire somebody or do it in-house or whatever, so maybe staff can comment, do we have to have those words, hire a consultant? But would we normally do that? Perhaps we would anyway.
It's a good question, and I did ask staff. It's all about capacity, but we'll let Mr. Seffy maybe advise what staff would be doing, if they'd be going to consult or doing it in-house.
This will be typically, Your Worship... This will be typically, your worship, involve engagement of a consultant to undertake the analysis. I guess it's arguable whether the expertise exists within current staff compliments or not, but we have not historically undertaken such work ourselves. So, we will be engaging somebody regardless.
So, your worship, I'm just happy that the, the motion's on the table, and we can all work together to meet the same end, because it sounds like they both, both the motions have the same result. We want to know what's the heritage designation of that building before anything else is done. So, I don't know if there's any need to amend it. I think I'd be happy to vote for it, then I could withdraw the other one.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Just a question through your worship to staff, just, do we have any, what, any indication of what the amount of money would be to, to do this or ballpark?
Less than $5,000, your worship.
Okay. It seems to me that in light of the, you know, some of the concern that's come up and by the, some of the residents in, in Alda Grove about this building, it makes sense to me to have a, to hire a consultant, maybe a so-called third-party person to give an opinion and perspective that might be helpful. So, I, I'd certainly support this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
And I concur with Counselor Whitmarsh's comments with regards to, I think it's important that we have an objective third-party do this assessment, particularly in light of some of the concerns in the community that perhaps the township wasn't upfront about buying this building in the first place, and they just wanted to tear it down. So, I, I would feel more comfortable with a third-party doing the assessment.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
There's no timeframe, I guess. We don't really have a timeframe on this, or is there a timeframe? So, it's just a matter of getting the report, a report back, and then figuring out, figuring out our next steps. It's not going to affect anything. You know, I think it's a good idea. Anyhow, thank you. I'm going to support it.
Thank you. I believe the, there is no urgency on this. There is no, as, as far as I know, no motion to, to proceed with demolishing it by Council, no direction to staff. It was just a matter of the property is purchased. And unfortunately, prior to purchasing property, we generally don't bring that out until once the property is purchased. So, so, of course, when the public hear about it, it's after the fact, and that's unfortunate, but that's the way we have to do our property purchases. However, there has been no direction, from what I can recall, to staff to do anything with this building other than to hold it for this point. There are some concepts out there, but nothing, no direction's been given. So, so there's no real sense of urgency, so.
Don't mention the word demolished. We have no intention of demolishing it at this point.
At this point, I say there's been no direction, whether to demolish it, to keep it, to turn it into a, into a chocolate factory, you know. Or any other type of factory. Counselar Anderson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Looking at this, I will be very supportive. I'm just hoping that the anticipated outcome will be a statement of significance, because I think that that is really what would be appropriate under the circumstances. We're talking kind of around that, about a consultant doing an analysis. But overall, I would find it most helpful to look at a context of the building itself. My understanding is, to some degree, there is nuanced analysis of whether or not something fits into a heritage as opposed to a category that be considered more along the lines of it has material value because of where it's situated, because the community values it. So, these are more nuanced approaches that I think could be best achieved through a statement of significance, similar to some I have actually seen with respect to fire halls. So, those are just my comments.
I saw Ms. Horrick's head nod that there will be a statement of significance. Yeah, that'll be included. Thank you. Counselor Woodward.
I just wanted to reiterate that, that was my assumption, in fact, that we would be pursuing a statement of significance for this building. And even if it didn't indicate that it scores high enough to be technically classified as a heritage building, that statement of significance would outline for us its heritage value on a scored system. And even if it hasn't, of having more sentimental value than technical heritage value, I think this is information we have to have prior to deciding what to do with the property in any form.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll call a question on I2. And it carries unanimously. And Counselor Long, did you wish to withdraw I3? Okay. I3's been withdrawn. And Counselor Richter, any other business?
Yes. We've received today notification of the declaration of related party transactions involving key personnel, management personnel, and elected officials. And I understand that we are now having to fill this form out as part of the requirements under our auditor's rules that they have to live by. And what I wanted to do is to get a clarification and perhaps maybe an expansion. What is the definition of key management personnel? Because I believe anybody who has control of any portion of the township budget should be considered a key management personnel, and they should be required to fill this out.
So, Mr. Backen or Ms. Sinclair, who's going to handle this? Ms. Sinclair? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, through your worship, Counselor Richter. For purposes of this document, and I think you're correct, it should be defined more clearly, it is the senior management team and, and mayor and council. So, keep, those are the two groups of key management personnel.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Backen, how do we expand this definition? Because anybody who has control, we had a situation a year or so ago that involved somebody making a decision about awarding a contract for catering, and that person had control of management budget because they made that decision. And I think anybody who's got any decision-making capability about the awarding of township monies needs to sign this statement.
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, we'll have to reflect on the expansion, but just to make sure we understand the context, this is not about the awarding, this is about rewarding, we're dealing with related parties, which are very much defined. And that definition would include family and relatives and siblings and those sorts of things. That's the first part of it. And the second part is then a transaction that's done at, other than fair market value. So, I just wanted to make sure we understood the scope and nature of what this is relating to.
Well, yeah. Well, the questions here are very clear. Are you aware of any transactions during the fiscal year between yourself and the township of Langley that occurred at a value different than fair value? Are you aware of any transactions during the fiscal year involving the township of Langley and a close family member that occurred at a value different than fair value? And are you aware of any transactions during the fiscal year involving the township of Langley and an entity controlled by you or a close family member that has occurred at a value different than fair value? I think these are critical questions, and I absolutely agree with the auditors asking them, but I think they should be asking them of more than just the senior management group. So, should I put a notice of motion on, or can we refer this to staff, or?
Yeah, I think the points are well taken. Mr. Backen has, has some answers. I think Mr. Backen can give us some information now, and maybe reflect on it and come back with some more information later.
I think we can get clarification from the auditors in terms of how they'd like to see it expanded, because we agree with the sentiment. In fact, most of our policies, guidelines, contracts require that of the staff in any event. I think they're looking for a declaration from the senior management team as to their knowledge for the purposes of the audit. I, I will have to verify this, but I think we're, we're in pretty good shape as to the, the effect of it as to employees, because of course, the employment contracts and the, the policies we have with HR deal with it. But we can certainly talk to the auditors about broadening the base if they so think that's appropriate.
That'd be great. Thanks. Okay, Counselor Woodward. Or Whitmarsh, sorry.
Yes. Just, I had, and as another item of business, and the items distributed to Council today, January 21st, on page 14, there's a, a letter from a Mr. Holland about recreation facilities and the family pass. I've received a number of emails and other messages this, over the, the weekend from different families very concerned about this particular item. I'm wondering if there might be a possibility at maybe an upcoming meeting, just having sort of a brief update from someone in the, in the recreation area who could maybe talk about that a little bit for us, and just some rationale behind. I understand the change happened on January the 1st of 2018.
Mr. Backen.
Certainly, your worship, it might be appropriate because we've seen some of the volume. There's some, some need to refine the understanding and then apples-to-apples comparisons, so perhaps referring that to staff for an update, then we can determine the best approach to actually update Council.
Could you make a referral motion or refer that to staff, and then we can get something back?
Okay, I'll make a motion to refer that, that item to staff in the distribution.
Counselor Long seconded, so, discussion on that. I'm just going to open a clear line. Counselor Long.
Thanks, your worship. And I think what we want to find out is what other jurisdictions are doing. We certainly want to be at par with everybody else. So, according to one of the correspondents, we're not. So, maybe staff can look into that, and we should be doing what everybody else is doing. I come from a family of six, but my sister never wanted to do anything, so it didn't matter.
Excellent. Counselor Kuntz.
Also, is there, I don't, haven't, haven't found it yet, in the township of Langley that we have a leisure access pass similar to City of Surrey and City of Langley? Do we have that, like a subsidized?
We have programs to assist those that are financially disadvantaged, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I am totally in agreement with this, and I know, coming from a family of five children, that if we had to pay extra on a family rate, we probably wouldn't have gotten to do it. So, I'd like to know from a census perspective exactly how many families in Langley have more than three kids, because that's what we're defining it now, is three kids. Maybe we need to up it. And also, if it's a matter of people trying to perhaps scam the system, maybe when they purchase these memberships, what they'll have to do is provide birth certificates that identify the parents. And I'm also wondering if, at the same time as we're looking at this, and this was another issue that came up, and it was very prevalent in the Alda Grove social media this past weekend, do we need to look at a different type of admission in order to keep water park users from interrupting swimming lesson users and lane users? I guess there was a problem with that, one of the growing pains, I guess, after we opened it, where if you went to the water park, you got to use the pool, but if people were having lessons in the pool, they were being interrupted by water park users. So, I'd like to get clarification on that as well.
I think staff will probably come back with a report at some point on how the water park was used last year and some things that we could look at at some point. Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, yeah. That's not my recent way of speaking, but I do, I mean, I am a pool user, and I just want to comment to Counselor Richter's point. I mean, it, it's a kind of a, it's a negotiation between a lot of the user groups within a pool. And I know that the water polo people sometimes get in the way with the recreational swimmers, and then the competitive swimmers sometimes get in, in the way of other people using the pool. So, it's a kind of a balance. So, I know that that report will probably come out. I, I wanted to speak to this item 10 on page 14, is, yes, you know, we can't be gaining that much extra money by penalizing or by charging a sixth person. I mean, I don't expect you to have an answer. I know reports are coming up. Well, you know, we want to keep these families in the pool, and we want to keep people using our facilities. So, I, I'd be hard-pressed to see why we would do this, and it's just best to keep it the way it is, but obviously, you'll come up with an answer. I know also, we're, for safety and security reasons and also other reasons, that we're introducing the wristbands, and some people have expressed concerns about whether the wristbands are needed and, you know, especially if you have a card that you could just hit, and it automatically takes off the money that you have actually put on your card. I, I use it, I've been using it for years of cards. So, now you have to wait for a wristband. So, there's other things, and I know there's growing pains, but, including recycling of the wristbands as well. I, I know we're going through a change in our policy and procedures, and the one we're kind of trying to make money and recover costs, but I'd certainly like the, the staff to look at that, taking a sec, a second thought at that. That's my only comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. And I'll call this I4. That carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Seeing none? Motion. Counselor Davis, what was to terminate? Counselor by, seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you.